The new reports on your board. I'm Ken Swanson, and right on cue, we have our fifth member tonight. So we'll start off by taking the roll. So, Mr. Sheridan, are you here?
I am here, yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
President.
I am here.
Ms. Scow.
Here.
And I am here as well. So that's five. So that will be the voting members tonight. We have one hearing. It takes four to five votes to vote against. So with that, we'll jump right into our first hearing, which is ten to twelve Walnut Street. And you have the floor. So introduce yourself and make your presentation.
Thank you. My name is Jesse Ann Bracina. I'm the owner of the property and my wife Jennifer. And I'm here tonight and Ryan McSherritt, who's a bricklayer and a texture is helping on the project. But I'm representing myself and managing the project myself as a homeowner. So I might have to ask for all forgiveness on technicalities of the code and the proper phrasing. But I'll do the best I can. We've been recognizing this from the last few meetings. We've been trying to come and anticipate what kind of questions might come up and what what they what kind of things the boards are interested in. So this is a picture of the front of the house. The primary addresses are on Walnut Street. It's ten twelve. It's a two family house. So two addresses, ten twelve, as I mentioned, it's in the R two. It is. It is in the demolition control over the district. Eighteen fifty's sidewalk re-provival. My understanding is it's not a form of each structure. It's a proposal is to add a a single story addition. I call it a single story addition because it's a garage, sloping lot, and then a an attic on the second floor. So we do have some living space on that attic area. We try to keep the roof lines underneath the existing structure. You'll see that there. As part of this, we're going to there. There is a. Is it okay if I stand up and point?
Yes, go ahead.
There you can see here is a rather large shed back there that needs to be taken down. So that's part of this is to take that out and and put a small utility shed somewhere else in the yard. And that's included in all the calculations. There are the proposal does not add. There's no new non-conformities. Basically, the non-conformity that's extending is in this front setback on the side of California Street. And I don't believe any existing non-conformities are intensified. And we proposed changes are not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. There are few requirements, so I understand. This is an updated plot plan showing the where the addition would go, the shed, as well as the existing structures on month of eighth Walmart. And by California. You can see the setbacks there. Anybody can come on? I made a table for everything.
I just want to say we'll just ask all our questions at the end.
Okay.
So the process is you do your presentation and then we take any input from the audience or any questions from the audience, and then we ask our question.
Got it. Okay. So I tried to put together a summary of the all the zoning measures requirements. The addition is off the rear. It's not existing non-conforming structure. We're extending the existing non-conforming setback along California. According to the zoning determination, sorry, this process, if the C O D is not triggered. We also had a sidewalk review and we did agree to repair two sections of sidewalk of sidewalk around the trees on Walnut Street. Which on we had on the next slide. We also calculated that the total proposed exterior change to these existing structures below the twenty-five percent limit. So we are we are proposing to make some restorations to the existing structure as well, you know, go over. We meet the proposed addition, the open space and lot coverage inside under setbacks. They built the table across the bottom. The lot area required is fifteen thousand. We're at six seven nine three, front inch one twenty. We're at eighty-two point five on both fronts. Height's thirty-five. The remains twenty-nine. I put the addition in there at twenty-three three to show that it's lower. Coverage is twenty-five percent. Existing is sixteen. We're just under twenty-five. I sized this. I I created the size of the shed to get up to that limit. The open spaces requirement is forty. We're at sixty-three now. And with the proposed changes, we'll be at forty-nine six. The front remains, the front is Walmart, remain seven three. On side A, which is on the eighth Walmart direction, is twenty-nine, which stays. That will change there. And then California Street is side B. Which is a six point two feet. And the addition, the addition will be set back from that house and suddenly actually seven feet five inches, eighteen inches off the back. So we can keep the the trim. And the rear is twenty twenty-five. Existing is thirty-six. We will stay within that boundary, within that twenty-five foot setback. Twenty-five three where it's positioned. Next slide. This is just showing the requirement for the sidewalk repair. We are not planning on making any curb cut changes. But it was it was made clear that if we do touch a curb cut that, you know, that would impact that may impact more repair requirements. So the next section here is views of the property. This is views of twelve Walmart. So this is the existing front side of the house. This is showing the adjacent property on eighth Walmart. With the driveway and fence and the structure you can see in the back there. This is from from twelve California across the street. This is a little further down from eighth California. And then this is a view kind of directly looking at the back of the property along the property line between us and five California. And then I thought for reference, some pictures of the surrounding property would be helpful. This is kind of viewed from across the street. Looking at number eight and down towards that's Oakland in the back there. Looking directly across the street, we have thirteen, then eleven and nine. Fifteen and then so seventeen and nineteen, seventeen and nineteen is a is a half house. And that was twenty-one. And one directly across the street at twelve, which is very similar style house. And then looking directly back at five toward Merrimack. It's just see the corner of six and yeah, what's on the very end. So the proposed addition here, it is a very simple rendering of where it will will put in right in adjacent to the existing. There's an existing parking area. There's a curb cut existing parking space. So the idea is to tuck it in right behind the existing tree line there. The proposed is shown on the left, the existing side of the front. We do want to restore the stairway. We get that back to something more more original. Gives you a size of the scale. This is viewed as viewed directly from the back. You see that the garage doors, the primary living area added to the first floor, which is I should probably have mentioned that the overall motivation for this is to get a the first unit in two family house is a we're trying to get it to be a single single floor first floor bedroom with no steps. Which you can't see in the picture here. It's actually a ramp from here to the parking area off the side. Right now, my my folks live in a three-story townhouse in Salisbury, which is not going to work up. It's been great for too long. So this this is kind of an ancient place design where the first floor is kitchen, living room and family room are all together. And then the second unit is upstairs in the second and third floors. That's like the basic concept that drove this floor plan. And then opportunistically, since the yard is sloping, giving me an opportunity for a garage. This is the view. If you were on Walmart standing at eight Walmart looking towards the side. We're just pointing out a couple of the the extra details here. We are replacing we'll replace the windows, replace the siding, restore the trim. Get it. There's a bunch of the trim is deteriorating and needs to be replaced. And the plan is to match that trim onto the addition. The the stairway there is up to the second level is is the secondary egress requirement for that avenue upstairs. They're just highlighting some of the other changes. Two over one windows were you know, they're all of them are mostly going back into their original frame size. Except these these windows here are not original of the house on the third floor. So we're proposing to put get those back into the size and proportion that would that would have been appropriate for that size of house if it actually had a third floor when it was originally built. Which it didn't. Stormers were put on in twenty two thousand twelve, I believe, from the permits. And then we want to, you know, restore that roof line across the front to break out that dormer and get the the architecture of the house back to back to where it should be, in my opinion. That portico in the front also is not original. So we'd like to remove that and we kind of replicate the facade around that entrance door to be very similar to the side, the side entrance on California. There's a stairway. Just other other things that we're trying to improve on the property. You showed some real some inspirations in the neighborhood that would land and Walmart would like to rebuild rebuild the stairway that would kind of bring that formal entryway back back into line. And then lastly, I tried to do a little you know, analysis of areas to kind of show the size of the addition in proportion to other properties in the neighborhood. And highlighting, you know, the other properties that are kind of multi-usey or half-house, two-family or condos. To to show that, you know, it's in keeping with both the architecture and the sides and and function of other properties in the neighborhood. And that is all I have.
Right. Thank you very much. Okay, the way this works, now that he's finished his presentation, anybody is welcome to provide comments. Anybody who's here, and then we'll check people who may be dialed in online. And you can speak for or against or ask questions or wherever you want. If you ask questions, we're not he's not going to answer them at the moment. We're just going to go around and see what everybody has to say. And then when when the members of the board here begin to ask their questions, that's when I think you hear some of the questions that were asked. You put to the So that is anybody here like to say anything? Either for or against or ask a question or whatever. Yes, would you please state your name and address for the American? We have a note paper.
Yeah, John Veal, two sixty-three Merrimack. I my house is on the corner of Merrimack and California Street. So it's relatively close. So I was wondering sounds as though we're likely getting rid of is which is not connected to the house. So this will be replacing that. Is that one of the things?
There's no garage in the property, right?
Well.
Shed.
There's a small shed.
There's a ten by ten by twelve shed.
You're going to get rid of that and then you're going to replace it with basically like it's going to be attached to the in-law apartment, the second apartment.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm not supposed to be.
Yeah. It's almost Christmas. Why don't we why don't you put your cycle up and explain?
Yeah, okay, okay.
So the existing shed is is here is rather large. That that will completely go away.
Yeah, okay. And that's what you're
Yeah, so that goes away.
And then you're going to expand, are going to leave that in our that space is not going to be added or are you just getting rid of that?
That this is just going to go away.
Okay, okay.
And I do have, I like to have a, you know, garden tool shed.
Okay.
So I have a smaller six by eight, this smaller eight, six by eight utility shed. Approximately over here if you know, to be able to go anywhere. Yes, it's just kind of a placeholder. The ninety percent of the work or energy here, it's the build this addition here that has the first format or better.
So how long? Do you know what the timeframe will be once you get the go ahead to do this?
How long is it going to take to put up?
I don't know. I mean, so that I mean
Depends how fast my contract is.
Yeah, the contract could take a long time and it can be very painful to me guys. I'm just wondering. I didn't know if you had any
So if you have, if you have a contractor lined up and we're starting the 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 process, you know, I we're living in it.
Yes.
So we're going to live in it during renovation. So nobody wants this done faster than I do.
No, no, I get that.
Also, I'm I'm pretty much so I'm not a builder professionally, but my wife and I renovate a number of older houses. And I'm planning to be working on that more actively. So I'll be managing the contractors myself. And, you know, my goal is to have it ninety percent done, you know, by the end of summer. And then that would be the exterior work really can't start until March. So it'll be done, the the bulk of the exterior is probably will be will be done by the summer. And I'll move aside and it might frankly take me a few years.
No, no, I get that. Will they? None of the trees are going to be cut back, right? Or will?
There is one tree right here.
Yeah.
That needs to come down. And there's two like small M lots that are here. But the 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 tree trees here, here and here will stay. We're not touching that. And there's a row of trees here that I think provides good blocking here and here that all stays. So we don't want to
We're just, will the driveway shrink down a little bit or will it stay this way?
It's pretty much going to stay where it is.
Okay. Because it's asphalt right now. I'm just wondering if you're going to do something else.
Figure or longer.
Well, being asphalt, you know, some people like it and other people want to add granite because in the front steps are granite. So I didn't know if you wanted to. You would anticipate.
I don't like asphalt, you know, as in currently a circus, you know, but I know I'd love to do something. You know, up here, this this parking area is is brick. It's nice. I would like to do that. Yes, with budget for me.
Yeah, okay.
All right. Do you have anything else?
I'm okay right now.
Yes, I actually have a question.
Could you state your name and address?
Yeah, Scott Marshall, five California Street. What prevents them from doing this as an investment property where they flip it into two condos and then move out of town? If you do some Google searches, this isn't the first time they've gone in front of a zoning board.
I think that's a question that I will be addressing rather than you.
Well, it's a concern as peanut butter.
I appreciate I appreciate your question. I've written it down. We'll get to it when we're done with the collecting questions. Anyone else would like to make a comment? Anyone else in the room here like to say anything? Make a comment or ask a question or?
I have a follow up. So what looks like you're going to take down a tree? And what were some of the other things you were thinking about that needed to be removed?
Be removed?
Yeah, it sounded like there were certain things you're like changing the steps and oh, I was trying to understand. I didn't actually understand someone else maybe. Yeah, it's not wonderful.
The picture of the Yeah, that might be a good one. Thank you. You know, this really what I'd like to do, if it's a sidewalk re-provival and these dormers, you know, were chopped in. Maybe I might say this in a positive way. I think they can be improved by restoring some of the existing trim detail, like extending this roof line across to break that field up. This portico is not original. So rebuilding this trim around that door like, you know, it would be period appropriate for this style house. You know, the stairway is rather complicated, multi-level going off to that again. If you show to see those examples, maybe look down to this picture here. If looking around the neighborhood, this is twenty-three just across the street a little bit around the corner. Like to get something, you know, with brick that matches the style of house to go in there. I don't think they would believe you do that. So it might be the term, but I was just trying to show, you know, to our tenant.
So you're going to get rid of the wooden steps and go to granite, maybe?
Well, so the house has a brick facade now. So I actually I own brick, but I guess.
Okay, good.
All right. Thanks, everyone in the room. Now we turn to anybody in our online audience. Caitlin, is there anybody out there who would? If there is, you can raise your hand by pushing the raise hand button at the bottom of the screen.
The first person is labeled Mary.
Mary. Okay, we have Mary out there.
Hi, guys. Mary.
For if you you have to unmute your microphone and
Echoing one second.
She's tired.
Yeah, okay. Is that better? Mary McCormack, twelve California Street. And appreciate the opportunity. We couldn't be there in person. So appreciate the opportunity to do it hybrid. I guess I had a couple of questions. One, in addition to the construction schedule, which I heard if I heard correctly, would be maybe March till August type of a thing. I'm wondering about days and hours, if there would be no weekend hours, what time the work would start and end every day? Is that something that can be answered now or not?
Well, yeah. Oh, I'm not supposed to. Give me guidance. I I wonder, Andy, if you could.
Yeah, would you like me to?
Yeah, why don't you? There's I think there's a city policy here.
Yeah, so I think just to clarify, we it seems to be a noteworthy of tonight. Typically, when these hearings are held, typically what happens is public comment is taken by any member of the public, anybody who's in butter or otherwise concerned of an application for any reason, express whatever concerns or questions you have. And then typically the board takes that into advisement. Typically, we'll ask, you know, similar questions or the same questions covering areas that they feel need to be covered based on all input they've received. So typically, it's it's not usually a back and forth between, you know, individuals and the applicant, but rather concerns expressed to the board and the board obviously takes that into account while addressing issues of the applicant. So questions about, you know, hours of operations, so where the the typical way I would say of addressing that is to raise concerns about days you know, times of the week or they might be concerned about and expressing that to the board members have that in mind. Board members can then decide typically whether or not there needs to be imposed any conditions to cover something or address something that that raises a concern. But it just helps to to sort of keep the orderly function of meetings. That's typically how these things are done. I hope that helps for some area that you think I should have clarified.
Thank you for that idea. I think we may have gotten a little bit off of that earlier, but probably we'll get back on that track. So as far as our online participant, we've written down that question. We will be asking that during the board questioning period. Do you have other questions or comments you'd like to make?
I do, yeah. Another question about exterior lighting. We are directly across from we're twelve California. We're directly across from twelve Walmart, their California street side, which I believe would be the the upstairs entrance. So I'm wondering about lighting, if there would just be the one exterior light like there is now near that door, and if there might be some type of a shield. It's a little bright right now. I can be two rooms away and still like, you know, get hit in the eyeball with it. And then I had another question about noise of garage doors. I don't have garage doors, but I don't know if they're mechanical or you know, manual, or if there's any kind of noise involved with the coming of ingoing of cars using the garage. And that's the end of my questions. Thank you.
Okay, and did we get, we had a bit of a technical issue at the beginning. Our note paper got, could you restate your name and address, please?
Sure. It's Mary McCormack, twelve California.
Excellent. Thank you. We hear you loud and clear. Great. Is there anyone else out there who would, this should have married, who would like to make a comment? No one else out there? I see one more question in the room here, and this time we'll just write the question down.
Okay, I was just wondering how many occupants will basically be in this the building in general.
Okay. All right, thank you. Anyone else have any questions or comments?
I do.
Okay, would you please state your name and address?
Yes, my name is Kathy Gary. I live at two Javel Street and a couple of blocks away. It's a very narrow street, and I'm wondering with the building process, where all the workers are going to be parked.
That's a nightmare.
Good point. Okay, thank you. Anyone else? All right, we'll close the questioning period and comment period. Now we'll come to the the chance for the the board here to ask their questions. And who would like to begin?
Excellent question.
Yes.
I think I I have a couple of questions. One is a question that we usually ask, I think, which is have you talked to your neighbors about plans? And all the butters to make sure that you, you know, discuss some of their concerns and and try to build them into your plans, I think, you know. Given you're representing yourself, you're not as used to seeing these types of questions. I think that a lot of attorney represented clients come in and they give us a stack of letters from their neighbors that they're not objecting. And so I'm wondering, it sounds like maybe you haven't talked to any of your neighbors about it.
Well, I'm wondering if you've shared your plans.
Yeah, I actually have. And if you scroll down to that last page. And one little green stars of people I've spoken with in person. When I before I started this process, I did go around and put a note in everyone's mailbox, my cellphone and the email address. And in a few cases, more than once. I do have a number of text messages, emails that I didn't feel was appropriate to print out and upload. But I've spoken personally with everyone in the immediate area that would let me. I think you missed me.
Yeah.
I just, you're right behind us already.
Certainly.
I put two.
You did. You never knocked on the door, though.
Okay.
Actually, I'm sorry. We need to let the conversation go through the through the chair here.
So so most everyone else, I stayed at the property to and met by, you know, breaking leaves or just texting me in response to my
Now, this is a two-family house right right now currently. And is it currently occupied?
No. We're we're in the process of selling our house and top build and plan to move in We're in the process of selling our house and top building, plan to move in um mid-January.
And you mentioned that you're, one of the motivations for the renovation was to change the layout of the current two family structure. And see that you have, do you mind going through some of the layout changes? I saw that you had some plans in the packet, but I thought it'd be helpful to just go.
Sure, not at all. I um I did not include the floor plans in this presentation. You have. Access or I.
I'll take a minute to pull that back, yeah.
So this is an overview, the current. Structure is basically two up downs where it kind of split vertically. Um, with two stairways that go up, which is. Takes up a lot of space and um. They're extremely steep, so part of this is also rebuilding the. Um. Getting all the stairways up to code. So this gives you, man, man. Yes, um. So this is the the current layout with the, you know, the title, title configuration as well. Um. We would take this portion out here. You'd see this would be, you know, living room, kitchen. Master bedroom. Uh, there's a bathroom for the floor. And a small, you know, um office, left room, wherever you can call it. There, and then basically the this portion becomes the 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 stairway entering up to the second level. Was that your primary area of interest?
Yeah, I just wanted to see where the currently existing two minutes are separated, so they're.
Yeah, it's tough. Um, so. It used to be split here and this portion would come upstairs and then. One, the other unit was very small. It was like this, and then it had a. Uh, really steep stairway up to one bedroom, above up here. But the one bedroom to this half was. That's that we're trying to get rid of by getting that on one level.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Glenn. Uh, who else would like to go next?
I'll follow up a few, I guess. I just found out how large each of the living units will be after after this. That will be approved as if we did.
Uh, roughly. Um, fourteen fourteen fifteen and. Just under, because they're both about fourteen hundred.
And is that is that appropriate? And what are the current size?
One of them's uh. Eight hundred. Eight hundred, nine and eight hundred and four hundred.
And how large is the? Uh, additional living space in the proposed addition? How big, how big is that?
We're adding about. Um, basically the, this is about six hundred here, and if you focus on. I think it's partial, there's a partial room here, so it's about four, four hundred, four fifty.
Okay. Yeah, can you comment if uh? Unless you comment on the types of garage doors that you might be considering.
Yeah, um. So it's uh it's a, they're. Very foot tall. I think we're probably gonna go with a single. Um, eighteen foot wide door, um. You know, I I have belt drives.
Will be remote control, I think.
Remote control belt drive in my house now that I. I think are pretty quiet, but.
Fair to say it would be typical of remote controlled garage controlled doors.
Yeah, well, yeah, but the the newer ones that are either screw or belt are way better than the old chain styles I used to rattle and plank around them. And we're gonna, um, I'm gonna put in a big, you know, a a well insulated door that's certainly not gonna be rattling steel, so. And, um, you know, I would. Uh, for my, you know, being below a master bedroom, um, the noise of the garage door is a is a is a big deal, so. It was certainly, that would be a consideration on the purpose.
Thank you. And can you comment on the exterior lighting that you. Um, install here as part of this project?
Yeah, I was not planning to change anything really. Right now, there's one side light. Right now, there is a post here. Um, I believe Mary was commenting, she lives in twelve, that's looking at the California Street entrance, there's one side light. Um. I um did not know that that was um. Super bright, doesn't need to be. I'd be more than happy to. Dial it down if that if that was.
Is there any additional lighting?
Oh, no, no. One, one light on each, on each, near each entrance. Is all I can do.
Okay, also, are you lighting connected to the garage?
Um, I was, I'm not, I didn't have a plan, but if that was.
Comment on the. Um, materials you intend to use to clad the structure?
Um, we're still still researching some some materials, um. You know, we we are looking at uh, it it's it's a hardy, it's a hardy board now. Um, and um. Unfortunately, a lot, all the windows have already, they've been replaced with relatively inexpensive vinyl windows, and a lot of the trim. Is failing and has also been partially restored, so we're we're looking at replicating. All the same detail with with a composite material, um. Either, uh, you know, an AZAC or or some of the newer composites. And, um, you know, we're still looking at siding, but it's it's likely to be a composite siding.
Thank you.
All right, should I remember this a little while?
I just had one, um, it's in our uh report that I guess you've spoken to the. Building Department for sidewalks.
Yeah.
They've they've added a special condition. I just want to make sure you're aware of it. Sidewalks on California and Walnut adjoining the project site may be improved to meet ADA compliance. In coordination with Department of Public Services. And that those would be done prior to the building plan to close out. You okay with that?
Um, I I am now. I that was, is that an addition? Was that added?
If I could, just for a bit of context, especially since our video audience necessarily knows, this is actually uh in accordance with a city ordinance. They call for based on scales of projects for the board to look at these types of things and the partner to comment. So it's not typical uh to expect when a project is being done of a certain threshold. To have some improvements done along the frontage. In this case, typically what is referred to as is the sidewalk uh or street trees.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, the only thing that was brought to my attention was the two areas around the trees.
Trees, right, and that's that's why I brought it up is, this appears to be different than.
Yeah.
So when you spoke to them, they didn't mention making the both sidewalks on both sides ADA compliant.
No, that was, was that in the?
I believe that was. He said disgusting site, does that review?
Did you mean with, was it Wayne Emerald that you met with, or did you? John Kelly, okay, yeah. So he mentioned verbally that if we changed. If we change any of the curb cuts. We would, and impacted any of the sidewalks, but then they would need to be brought up to ADA compliance.
But they they had discussed the uh repairs to the current sidewalk, they were just saying.
Any, the all, the conversation we had about California Street. Um, and bringing that up to ADA compliance. Was related to the curb, any curb cut there. If the addition um impacted that curb cut and I disrupted any of the existing sidewalks in any way. They would, they would all need to be replaced, um. So, um. I don't know if it would benefit the board just, Caitlin, if we could clarify what was the actual written comment we got maybe from Public Services.
Do you mind reading that, or I'll read it for you if not, but.
Says the sidewalks on California Street and Walnut Street adjoining the project. Site shall be improved to meet ADA compliance in coordination with the Department of Public Services. Said improvement shall be completed prior to the building term of closing. And it goes on, in extenuating circumstances, including but not limited to seasonal constraints, an alternate deadline for compliance. Herewith may be substituted to and approved by sole discretion of the zoning administrator. And that, to me, that just sounded different than him fixing the sidewalks in front of the trees.
I would just say without further clarification, it sounds to me more like uh the written comment from Public Services, maybe there's something lost in translation. But it sounds like they're expecting the sidewalks to be upgraded to make sure that they are ADA accessible, whereas today they may not be that case. Um, maybe maybe there's something that was lost in translation, but it sounds to me based on the written comments that that's the case, even if there might have been. Uh, maybe it's not something that's ever, you know, clear, I guess, when you left with John this side, I don't know, but.
Yeah, I just want to add, I just want to add something personal. When when somebody makes a huge improvement to a house, like a big addition like that. They always have to improve the sidewalk.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's, I mean, that's, so we get sent a letter from them.
Yeah, yeah.
Saying it needs to be part of the project. And it's not, you're not being simple without, are you?
Oh, no, no. Yeah, no, like the first, my first reaction was, okay, you know, I was, I I was. Um. We got into a discussion about who said that, it doesn't matter.
How we got here, because that basically is, it's just the way it always works when there's a large improvement to a building, that's right.
Yeah, that's um, that's fine.
Fine, so so, Clyde, did you have any other questions or comments?
Caitlin pointed out that in the report, they do kind of explain where this came from. However, what, as they're explaining it, it doesn't quite agree with the actual special condition. Well, I I I'll read the whole thing. This project appears to trigger the tree and sidewalk ordinance. OPD asked the Department of Public Services for recommendations and the DPS. Responded, no new street trees are required. However, the sidewalk on Walnut Street. Will need to be updated and repaired, meeting ADA compliance and accommodating space for tree wells for the two mature trees in this section. So that, I think that's what they spoke to you about, that's right. It goes on. On California Street, where the second curb cut for this property is located, should the work encroach into the right of way. And the apron for the new elevation and the proposed addition in garage parking. That area too will need to be replaced and brought up to code under ADA compliance. I think that's, you said that too, if you if you heard it, if you touch it. Given the DPS recommendations, please see the below suggested draft special conditions. Should the ZBA be inclined to grant the request? I think the special condition goes one step further and says you will, it's like fix California Street, right? Doesn't say if you touch it, right?
So if if it pleases the board, we could revise it. If the board is inclined to open the permit, we could revise that language accordingly to uh better align with. The DPS comment, if you will.
Yeah, I think that would be fair.
And we're unnecessarily imposing that requirement, but we're making a contingent upon the alteration. If it happens, then they have to.
Then they have to do it, because that was your understanding, correct? If you were, you touched California. Okay. That makes sense, yeah, no, it does. But thank you for digging down further on that, I think it now aligns with the previous conversation that's sitting down. Clyde, did you have anything else? No, I'll say all the other questions.
Yeah, I'll say a couple of questions. Um, just picking up on some of the uh questions asked by some of the uh. The attendees here at the meeting, uh, with regard to the uh. When the work is underway. Walnut Street and California Street are narrow, densely populated streets, so can you speak to, you know, what you'll do with respect to the the workers? Parking so that the residents aren't leaving all their.
Um, for sure, um. So I I do think we are fortunate enough to have um four off-street parking places already. So certainly take full advantage of that. Um. And, you know, I can, um. I I I try, I try to give everyone cell phone and contact info. I I can try to make sure. You know, people park full of poor way that we're not racking up. All the subs all at once, that there's only one or two trucks on site at a time, like, that's usually how things go anyway. I'm not really sure what. More I can, I can do on that. There's any specific. Events or requests, certainly, right?
Yeah, I mean, I think that just generally, you know, try and be accommodating of the of the neighbors. I mean, making yourself the uh the onsite partner that you have. Probably, um. We might go a long way, although I'd imagine that you. Some of it will be eaten up when you're doing your uh. The site work and dumpster and whatnot, um. But that might be something to to consider, you know. Parking a little bit further away or something like that. I don't, I'm not really sure what one would do, but just to uh be accommodating of the uh. Of the other on the street, I suppose. And then similarly.
There are lots that, um, we're not parking lots in cashmere work, certainly. We look. Maybe our vehicles there while work's being done.
Um, okay, uh. And similarly, uh, with respect to the uh. The hours of of uh work. Just standard, standard hours. I think that, Andy, is there a condition in the?
Uh, the standard, well, but I believe we have a standard, well, like, condition. We don't, it's very rare, generally speaking, for the board to have, you know, unusual. Especially hours per se.
The standard is like, it's seven to five on weekdays and eight to four on Saturdays.
That sounds right, yeah.
No Sundays, right?
You know, Sundays is definitely, yeah.
Seven to five weekdays and.
Weekdays, Saturdays is uh seven to four, I believe.
Eight to four.
Sorry, eight to four, sorry, yeah. Um. You know, typically they don't work on Sundays, just to kind of get residents to their letters and.
But that's a, that's a condition of the of the permanent standard condition of the permanent, yeah.
Certainly.
You know? Uh, I think that's it for me.
All right, um. I've got some questions, um, let other people ask them. Oh, no, one didn't get asked, which was the accuracy. Um, what, uh, well, actually, there's another one, your question as well. I think you already mentioned your family and your, uh, I guess your parents or something, or?
So my wife and I have one, one daughter is in college. She. When she's home, she'll be with us summers, um, and then. Um. You know, in two, three years after this is done, my family, my parents are ready. They they would come into my my uh my mother's.
Well, that would be four people that went to college, basically. Um. The other question, I don't think it's a question for you really. It's a question more, I think. I, we happen to have our. The head of our planning department here, I can try to answer the question, which is. I think the question was, what prevents him from simply flipping us into condos? And what is the process that would? That's not a by right thing, I assume. Don't they have to, what do they have to do if they want to make a two family into condos?
Uh, there is a city condo conversion ordinance, but I think we'd have to have some further discussion about uh what that language says and how that operates today versus updates. Changes that might happen to it. Generally speaking, the zoning ordinance doesn't deal with the form of ownership. Um, for, you know, these these units, meaning if someone wants to sell, you know, a unit, they can sell a unit if it's a two family. They could be owned separately, you know, per se, so, um, I guess if, uh, generally speaking, this sometimes comes up here, but there's not any ordinance that prohibits someone. You know, as long as it's compliant with the zoning ordinance for the use that's going on to sell, you know, the individual units or to have them separately owned, if you will, if that's the.
Do you happen to know if this unit complies with? Being able to sell it as two condos? Does it, does it have the proper areas and frontages or whatever is required?
Uh, I have not examined this myself. I'm I'm following, obviously, just from the the um. The materials we typically get for the ZB application to make sure it complies with the ordinance and I get the belief that's needed. Um, but if there's something else that you're looking for, I'm like, you know. I'm not sure what that would be.
I mean, typically, we don't run into those questions and people, they don't come to us and say, I'd like to make it a condos now. And that's something, we don't really get involved in that. The prior occupant of this, who apparently sold it to this gentleman, could have perhaps sold it for condos, but. He could sell it for him. It's not something we get involved with. It's not something we really consider.
And 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 I, one of the years that it has come up, like a number, number of times in the years, typically when there's rental units and we have complaints or concerns, a lot of people are concerned about those becoming. Just, you know, condo units that are sold out as opposed to be a rental stock in the community, uh. For residential, you're, like, you're, that's typically where I hear that concern, the reason, again, we don't have anything in ordinance that prohibits that happening, there's been. You know, there's discussion about notifying the city, but the, you know, tools by which to stop, you know, change that, or that's a dummy.
I assume you don't have the intention to turn this into condos?
I don't.
Thought I'd ask for a record. All right, I have no other questions.
Can I have to follow?
Oh, we have a follow-up question.
Yeah, um, you, you just sort of, uh, explained that your parents would be moving in there in like two to three years, I think you said. In the interim, two to three year period, would you be renting it, or what would you be doing under, or would you be just completing work?
Probably be working on it.
Yeah. I, okay, okay.
All right.
And, you know, my daughter coming back from school.
So we will close the question period now from the board, now what we do is we go around the table. And we hear from each person whether they can support this application or whether they're unlikely to support that application. Um, and it has to pass a two-pronged test, and I would appreciate it if people, when they make their comments. Address whether or not it passes those two prongs. So who would like to begin?
I'll give it to you.
Mr. Bennett.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Uh, thank you, Mr. Anderson, for your presentation. It was quite thorough. Spike, you like the guiding hand of competent lawyer. So, so I say that somewhat trepidation, because we don't want this to get around people without lawyers. Uh, it was quite good, that was very helpful, um. Uh, well. As, as Mr. One indicated, there, there are two criteria here, the first one is, um. You have to demonstrate that there's none of them, none of them conforming, and there's none of them non-conforming. So then we, uh, wrestle with the second, uh, problem, you know, system, that is whether or not. Uh, what you are proposing here, uh, is substantially detrimental to the neighborhood. Uh, or, or to the existing structure and the existing one. In that regard, uh, I make a number of observations, first, uh. Uh, the addition is, is large, relatively large, I'm getting around, it's about twenty-six by twenty-four, so it's a pretty. Uh, thing is a good footprint. Uh, however, that's, this begins the analysis, I guess, from my perspective, uh. Uh, even though it's, it's quite large, certainly, uh, continue to meet the, uh, open space and lot coverage criteria. Uh, under the zoning ordinance. Uh, secondly, I note that, uh, while you're extending, you're extending the non-conformity, some, one or five feet. Uh, you are setting back the proposed non-conformal structure by a foot or so, a foot and few inches, so it. It's, uh, it is not as intrusive as the existing structure, and, uh. I, I for one appreciate that, uh. Um, I also note that as part of this proposal, you are. Intending to make some significant improvements to the existing structure, uh, windows, uh, the, uh. The, uh. Portico, the, the trim, uh, and improving the entrance, all of which, uh, I think, uh. Go a long way to enhancing the nature of the structure and, uh. Enhancing the architectural consistency and integrity of the structure, so, uh. So, I also appreciated your chart that you brought us, which is on the screen right now, which. Which you have attempted to put your proposed structure in context, in terms of size and scale and massing. Uh, in the neighborhood, and I note that, uh, like a gentleman, and the overall size is not. Uh, is essentially consistent with the neighborhood, uh, and that is, uh, the fact that we will, to frequently. Second con, set up from satisfaction, uh. So all that being said, uh, since there is no new, uh, conformity. And since, uh, in my opinion, uh, the structure is, uh, not substantially, uh, detrimental to, uh. Existence of structure and the lot itself or the neighboring structures and residences, I get rid of this, like, proposal. Request for a specific.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Who else? Who would like to comment next?
Uh, the boy, I'll comment next, um, I, I think I, I pretty much agree with Mr. Bennett, I. I wonder about the, the long garage doors opposed to two garage doors and just if that would be more intrusive when it opens. To have a giant garage visible as opposed to, you know, one, one car stall, uh. Visible, um. So I, I'm a little concerned about that, and I think, um. I'm also a little concerned about sort of the, the access, um, stairway on the back of the, of the new, um. With proposed structure, sort of the lighting there, I think might be more complicated than, um. Maybe answering it off the cuff, um, earlier, in that you have a couple of different landings and maybe, you know, it might be darker under those stairs. Than anticipated, and you have different entry doors, um, but I think again, uh, the. The special permit requires that, as a, as a standard condition, those lights sort of are down facing, um. Down facing lights, um, but that's probably worth, you know, worth considering further, um.
Go ahead.
I would, my earlier response about no additional light, I, my orientation was around exterior, it seemed to be your, the conversation had tended to be around.
Oh, of the streetscape, yeah.
What's affecting the other neighbors, but your point is that, is well taken, that, that side is going to face eight, so. I need to be equal, not so that I, I need to be aware of that.
That, that backside, doesn't it face the five, the sort of there?
Um, the, the face of the garage will.
Face five, but sort of the, the.
That look, that corner, yeah, is really towards, you know.
Yeah, so it'll impact, yeah, I see what you're saying, I see where, yeah, okay. I meant five California, you were saying eight Walnut, right, so.
Yeah, I mean, this, the stairway you're talking about is like this, like, here.
Yeah.
I, I guess I, I would think those lights would be.
More and more that way, well, yeah, okay. Them too. So I think, uh, you know, those are the areas of concern that I have, but as far as the size and the. The, the massing, I think, uh, you, you're going to be okay with respect to open space and lot coverage. Um, and you're, you know, you're well under the existing bridge height, so I don't think that it, massing. Is going to be a problem for me, but I do think, you know, that some of those sort of neighbor features are, are. Important here, especially when you're kind of, you know, looking out to the side of, of five. From the garage, maybe those, you know, the two doors I think might be more palatable than the one giant door, um. So I think, uh, you know, and otherwise, you know, there's no, no conformity and.
Yeah, we had originally drawn it as two, and, um, for that reason, we prefer the aesthetics, and we both look like the aesthetics. Um, the conversation around the one was, just, um, very gracious and things like that.
Yeah, no, I, uh, there's all sorts of different, different practical things from aesthetic things, yeah, I understand, uh. But I think, uh, I'm, I'm okay to support this.
Okay. Um. But, you have.
Yeah. Uh, I have to agree with, uh, my fellow board members, I, I don't think there's any, uh, new non, non-conformity, and I do think that there's no, uh. It's not detrimental to the neighborhood, um, when I first looked at the drawings, the s- the scale and everything. Bothered me a little bit, but, uh, to be honest, it, it does fit in with the neighborhood as you drive around there, there are some homes that are in the three thousand square foot area. Uh, here and there, sprinkled about, there are some smaller ones, um, this, I think, fits on the lot, the lot's big enough. Um, with it, uh, dropping off as it goes down California, I think, uh, what they're proposing fits well. Um, and I, and I do appreciate, as Mr. Bennet said, some of the improvements they're going to do to the building. Um, you know, some of the upgrades, um, changing the roof line in front of the dorm room, the portico windows, that. I think that's all steps in the right direction, so nice and, uh, that's it, I can support the application.
All right, thank you, uh, for my own comments, um. Once again, much of what I was going to say has already been said by my colleagues, um. Mr. Bennet was listing the things that made that improve the house, I, I would also add that what you're doing on the. Putting the, uh, the roof there underneath the dormer windows, uh, helps a lot, going from that yellow house to the other house, I think. Um, restoring that roof line, I think also deserves to be in the minutes, um. On the garage doors, um, you know, you put in your plans, two garage doors, I know you said one garage doors, but when you hand plans into the planning department. And we, if we were to approve this plan with two doors, then you gotta build it with two doors, so.
Uh, uh, my mistake, I, I, I didn't appreciate that, 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 that detail would be.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, basically, the plans that you hand in are what we assume you're building. So if you have other changes, you should speak up soon.
Understood, um, is the, is the correct message to the board that it's two doors?
Well, I, I heard that from, from one of my colleagues.
I mean, as a, as a condition that we put in this, I'm, I'm okay with that, if that's.
Well, I don't, yeah, I, I think what I'm trying to say is on the plans, so.
Yeah, it, it, just to supplement what the chair is saying, typically because they are incorporated in the decision, this is the approval, meaning you have to do two doors, so. Yeah, so which is due to the chair, it's very important to know, uh, that what you have in the place is what you want to do, otherwise there. You're going to have a problem down with the billing department because they can't give you permits that are inconsistent with what the plans show here, so.
I mean.
Understood.
Many of our, you can hire a lawyer and, you know, bring in this, who's done this a million times, I. I applaud you for trying to do this yourself, uh, and, uh, so you may not realize that, but the plans that you hand in become part of the approval. And those are your plans, and if you want to change something, it's the process you have to work through with planning department. And it's not that easy.
Best to have the plans right in the first place, yeah.
Yeah, it's better to get the plans right, so, um. But anyway, I, I think my colleagues have kind of said, from my perspective, um, you know, walking around that neighborhood, it's. It, it's, it's not going to stick out as an overly large house, I mean, it's on a decent sized lot, um, and it fits the coverage ratios, uh. And it's not like a big two-story addition, it's, it's, I realize that's a garage, I'm very quick, it's, I think it's, uh. I think it's, uh. I think it's fine, so with that, I would look for a motion. Oh, I, did I get you wrong?
No, I would echo all, all of the comments of, of my colleagues here, I think that, you know. Clearly it meets the first prong, that there's no new non-conformity, and with respect to the second prong, that it's not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, I think. You know, echoing what everybody else has said, that the plans look like it's an improvement, you know, to the, to the current form of house that's there. Although I would add, I typically take comfort when people have sign off on their neighbors, that their neighbors don't think it's substantially more detrimental. To the neighborhood, um, and that, you know, I'm sorry that that's missing here, because it does. You know, they're the ones that have to live next to it and live in the neighborhood, so we don't always take what they say as, you know. As determinative, but it does always give me comfort that my determination of what's going through your neighborhood is, is, is accurate, so. But that being said, I, I could support this.
Right, I'm sorry, I, I'm gonna just ask one question. Uh, I asked at least around this garage door, I just want to make clear, I, I agree with my colleagues that aesthetically, I prefer double door. You raised the notion, you made some reference about turning radius, but I. I would hate for you to have to come back here, have you comfortable with that, does that meet the logistical requirements here?
It is.
Okay, so I want to.
Okay, with that, I will keep for motion.
Bennett, thank you, I would move that, uh.
It's ten twelve Walnut Street.
Yeah.
Uh, we want, want the, uh. Computer just, was it ZNC twenty-three thirty-one, is that what it is? Is that right?
Yeah.
Yes, ZNC twenty-three dash thirty.
I would move that for request. Especially, permit for non-conformity for. Granted, with the conditions set forth.
Department of Public Services, but we're going to modify.
Why, why don't you continue with that?
Sorry, so the sidewalk on Walnut Street. Adjoining the project shall be improved to meet ADA compliance and coordination with the Department of Public Services. Said improvements shall be prior to the building term of closing. If the sidewalk on California Street is modified and improved. That sidewalk adjoining the project site shall be improved to meet ADA compliance and coordination with the Department of Public Services. Said improvements shall be completed prior to the building term of closing. That, I think that's more in keeping what you heard and, and what was written above.
That was my original thinking.
All right, so we have a motion, but somebody likes to second it.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Well, now we go around the table, it takes four votes, Mr. Bennet.
Yes.
Mr. Shaggy.
Yes.
Mr. Scow.
Yes.
Mr. Wild.
Yes.
And I vote yes, it's back to nothing. You have approval.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good luck with your project.
Thank you.
All right, that is our own hearing this evening. Next item of business is to attend the minutes, real last meeting. Let's assume everybody will see them. Are there any suggested changes to the minutes? She's running it through.
Must be running it through spots. Spell, spelled grammar and for source check.
With someone, you know, like to make a motion.
I'm making a motion with the administration group, that's submitted, is there a second?
Second is. All in favor? He's approved, you know. All right, there's one other topic, which is, we were going to talk about it to your news tonight, but as I understand it, our attorney is. Busy and just started looking at it, or will be looking at it our next meeting, is that correct?
Yeah, our council had, uh, backed up a couple of things they had to take care of already, so, uh, unfortunately, we weren't able to get responses back then for this particular meeting, so our plan is to, once we get those responses back. We'll have that discussion that I think the best shared originally expected, uh, we would have, um, they're basically supplemental questions after the councils adopt the ordinance. And we know that you, as a board, have to approve the special permits for the limited scope, uh, of those that are in the investor category. Um, the question was, there's a couple of questions, which, uh, I think the members have seen, um, essentially along the lines of, you know, some guidance for how the board, you know. Could might make its conclusions, um, you know, how to sort of evaluate that, if you will, and, um, how the others, you know, if they're agreed by something, how they might, you know. Uh, how that might be looked at, so in essence, um, council's been asked to chime in on that a little bit, and whenever we get back, we'll circle back with you. And then have some discussion from there, uh, obviously, you know, however many we get at some point, you'll have those in front of you as special permits, but, um. As I think you kind of pointed out previously, right now, we have the basics, but other than the, you know, sort of requirements that we met, we have the basic special permit requirements. There weren't any special unique provisions, if you will, that had to be added to like a new finding that the board had to make in relation to short-term, whether you, so you have your typical. You know, is it, is it a, you know, a problem for the neighborhood, you know, it's, it's those typical kind of evaluations that you do, um, the usual, uh, listing that you, uh, that we've seen, so. Um, sometimes the council, uh, or, you know, the legislative body will put in some kind of special provisions or evaluation you're doing here. It has to meet the requirements of that ordinance, obviously, and, you know, typically it's not going to come to you by the zoning administrator unless it does. You know, meet that threshold, but then you're going to have the typical special permit criteria for evaluating or not to grant that special permit for use, so.
So do you anticipate we'll be getting input from the state solicitor before we have to rule on one of these things?
Definitely, definitely.
Right.
Yeah, and, and that's obviously important.
Yeah, it's very important.
Yeah, we, uh, we, we try to be respectful of that, sometimes council needs a couple of weeks to, uh, circle back on something, again, depending on bandwidth and so forth, but obviously. You know, a few weeks out should be reasonable enough time, and after that, you know, then we're, it's kind of like, all right, we're paying you, so.
Are you getting a hopper yet, and, and you, have you received any proposed requests from Mr. News?
Uh, I, I don't know whether Jennifer has, but, I mean, we, I haven't had, we haven't had any formal applications, if that's the way. No, we, when, and, uh, we're actually in the process right now of finalizing the sort of guidance for folks online, where you're paralleling some other communities been looking at, for examples of. You know, how they, how they sort of provide a guidance to folks, what things to, you know, make sure are in place or look for, um, we're planning on sending out some notices to folks that are, you know, listed. Want things to, you know, make sure are in place or look for, um, we're planning on sending out some notices to folks that are, you know, listed as running short-term rent units, um, you know, letting them know. You know, be aware, you need to, you know, if it's not a zoning provision, you certainly need to get a license, you know, but basically be telling where to look for the regulations, you know, trying to check in with us and kind of giving folks a heads up. Um, obviously, um, we have, you know, if you've been tracking all the discussion, you know where it is, you're gonna, we have some folks who are actually investors according to the state as a certain threshold, like your time frame, which is February. Uh, this year, and that has a three-year term basically on it, maximum that, that, you know, that they have to run out before it's essentially advertised in the city as a category. Uh, unless the council ordered it, and it ordered it, so it's basically advertised, um, you know, in a three-year period, three license cycles, but one special permit cycle essentially.
Okay, um, did I ask a question?
Sure.
Did, um, were you guys able to make any progress on how the meeting could be conducted, whether it should be. Live only or not live only?
Oh, sure, um, if, if it's all right to switch gears today, yeah, thank you, I'm, I'm glad you brought that up, because I actually wanted to touch base on that briefly. Um, the planning board had a slightly different take, as we were talking about pros and cons, and some of this has come out, I think you're, you know, talking about, we have these owl cameras, we've been using them since the pandemic, and. We've had some mechanical issues with them that have been a problem, as I've seen, I, I think you've even seen a few of them as well. Um, our IT department has dealt with some of them, but we've also had, you know, there's been, uh, in a couple of recent council meetings, or a couple of recent bombing attempts in there, so. There was some concern raised by the, um, this committee, the one of the last meetings, I think it was the very last one, the one before that, about modifying our approach, where we have folks comment in person, right, as a matter. Um, and one of the things that came up in our discussions was, we were talking to the planning board and thinking sort of internally, and I would just flag for you is, um, I don't know, again, it's just. Leave it to you, I, you know, if you wanna handle it, we can, we can modify the approach, but, um, I would be hesitant, just given all the, uh, considerations, uh. First off, I would not wanna preclude, I know the last time we talked about this, the, this sort of bright line rule, I think the board members were suggesting was. Nobody is participating remotely, or just sort of streaming it, uh, I just wanted to throw out there, just by example, we oftentimes, with, whether it's council meeting or board member meeting, oftentimes. Um, becomes out of expense and availability, if you wanted legal counsel to be here, I wouldn't wanna preclude, for instance, our legal counsel from participating remotely if you wanted them to, and yet your bright line rule might sort of preclude that, if you will. So just to throw out there, the other thing that sort of, you know, by extension of that, and it's up to you as a board how you wanna handle it. Um, I would prefer myself, I would, you know, or, you know, recommend something, I would recommend some latitude, at least on your own part as board members. To participate remotely, should you need to decide by a quorum or keep things moving sort of efficiently. To me, it, yeah, I, I would hate to sort of assure ourselves in the foot by not making that a possibility, to the extent it's allowable. Uh, if you wanted to basically say to all your members, you know, we all have to be here in the room, and it doesn't matter if, you know, if we're to be able to participate remotely. That's, that's a judgment call, you can make a decision, but it then requires more people to be physically available. Um, and I don't have any preference per se of that, just that, I, you know, generally speaking, I would suggest maintaining some flexibility so that you can, you know, do what you need to do as a board. Um, and so that's something you might wanna consider before we just sort of unilaterally cut off, you know, even board members participating remotely if need be, or legal counsel. Uh, versus saying to the public, you know, come and comment in person, um, the last thing I would just say is that, um. Ken and I were talking about, say, you know, I, I'll just give you my, my perspective on it is, um, when I started as a planner, you know, this, this Zoom stuff, the online stuff was just not a tool, right? Um, and I just happen to think that in today's modern age, that probably folks, whether it's since the pandemic or not, have probably become more accustomed to the idea of participating remotely. So, um, they don't know, it's not necessarily a requirement at all, um, per se, uh, but some folks have sort of become a con, you know, accustomed to that, so we can certainly broadcast and try to make. Get clear, you know, where there's been a change of sort of how we do things, um, and we wanna make sure with our notices, we talk in the office, we wanna make sure our notices going forward say, you know, if the board wants folks to come in person. Uh, we would wanna put that in the notice so that there isn't anybody who's, um, you know, feeling disgruntled because they weren't quite aware, and they've gotten used to a couple of years' cycle in which, you know, they can come and do remotely. Uh, we'd wanna just make sure that's very clear upfront, so we put it on our website, if you wanna comment, come in person, or on the notice, you know, in, you know, the paper, go into a butters, come in person. Um, but again, that's up to, you know, how you wanna handle it, generally speaking, with the planning board, for instance, by going with example. They, um, they weren't like, you know, yet ready to just sort of say, you know, pull the plug on that, all that is the spectrum, um, there are, there's. You know, still sort of a tendency, obviously for understandable reasons, to want things to happen in the room, it's a little more efficient, you know, it is less likely to have technical issues and whatnot. Um, but there was a little bit more skepticism, let's say, on the planning board end of pulling the plug on something that might be beneficial as a tool periodically, um, to me, the, um. You know, awareness that folks have for the meetings and the engagement is a good thing in general, planning generally. Uh, but obviously, as you and board members have pointed out, there are pros and cons to different aspects of it, and you have to make a call as to how you wanna handle those, so. Um, just for those of mine, you know, if I'll say you wanna handle it, and we'll, you know, make the adaptations, um. We're just trying to make sure we don't get people who are sort of disgruntled, not, you know, caught up guard, or, um, you know, frustrated by the, the new change in policy or how we handle things.
So you're saying basically the planning board is, is continuing for legal counsel for their own me- members and also for the public? But I guess the city council isn't, I mean, I.
And the city council that's allowed public to.
Yeah, so I, I don't know, I was, I saw one or two of the Zoom bombing attempts, I know it was, it took a little while for them, but some of these, I should have, uh, paused one of them, but, uh, or two of them, but, um. Anyway, I can't speak to their, their experiences, uh, each board obviously has to sort of, we don't have a city policy that is mandatory for each board to follow that same. Policies, so there is some, you know, latitude, you wanna do something differently here, um, we're trying to be just, you know, responsive to what you do, how each board wants to handle it. Uh, the council has, I think, made, you know, a decision based on two recent meetings where there was a, a Zoom bombing attempt during the, uh, public comment period they had. Um, we haven't had that here, I remember at one point during the pandemic, there was something from the school department maybe once, and maybe the city council at one point.
Never had anything like that.
I don't recall us having any.
We had strange meetings, uh, they went for. Hour, hour.
We, we did have a few where the public comment period might got a little bit, you know.
Public comment got a little.
Little over.
Crazy.
Yeah, but that's different, I think, than.
People were having some, uh, some drinks while they waited for their turn in the queue.
So, again, it's, it's up to you how you wanna handle it, you know.
Well, they really have to work a little harder. Did we, I know we had a discussion of this recently, did we actually take a vote as to what we wanna do, or was it just a sense of the board, or what we did?
I mean, you didn't take a formal vote, you kind of made it clear to us that you wanted to have a bright line where nobody was participating remotely, and.
Starting like in January.
In January, yeah, and so we were kind of, you know, thinking.
I mean, kind of pushing back that. I'm saying, should we consider basically a planning board something like that?
I mean, I guess, no, I guess the main thing is, it's up to you as a board, I would, I mean, the bare minimum, I certainly wouldn't preclude legal counsel if you want them, if they're needed for some reason, I'm assuming they're needed for this next meeting, but. That to me would be, you know.
Even if Mr. Delilah agrees with that.
Yeah, um, and then, you know.
It's a good thing to have people participating, you know, I think there's such a lack of transparency in the city generally. That I think having people be able to watch and participate from, you know, online when we have the tools is a good thing, you know, like. You know, for me, when I had young children, it was not possible to come to city meetings, right? Especially when you have to sit for two hours and wait for your, wait for your turn, and to see what's happening, and to be able to do that. You know, and not have to walk into a meeting late after your kids go to bed, I personally think it's a, it's a, a good thing, unless we have a specific reason. Um, for people not to participate remotely, I think that, you know, if, if. If we think people are too thick off the cuff when they're just hanging by phone, make them appear on camera. For example, so that, you know, people see their faces and looking you in the eye when they're insulting each other, but, you know. That's my perspective.
Yeah, and, and I tend to agree, and I, and I mainly, you know, don't forget, I'm, I'm also looking at the planner, I'm also looking at the conference, the planning process for a community, you know, um, you know, long range planning, land use planning and so forth, so to me. Community engagement is a very important facet of that, um, I do think in the same context, the permitting is very important too, because you get that broader, but you can't have every butter, can't possibly, unfortunately. Be here, you know, for hours, you know, each night, there are some folks who can be here at each council meeting, or each planning board meeting, or each city meeting. Um, but the vast majority of people can't do that, so to me, it's actually a good thing from a comprehensive planning perspective or a community engagement perspective to have that. But again, that's up to you as a board, how you wanna handle it, um, I just, to me, it's been actually a good thing, I sense, since the pandemic, sort of advent of this kind of tool here. Um, granted, there's pros and cons, and I certainly have not been happy with some of the equipment we've had up until now, you know, I've been pressing for better stuff. Um, and that, we're sort of migrating and beginning that, you know, mobilization, that finally, um, we had a lot of delays in transition from our ATM, where we had, we had a transition of IT over a period of year, but, um.
Excuse me, can I just?
Sure.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I think there are a number of categories here that participate, so the first category is the applicant, the applicants representatives. I have thought that, you know, that that category should be present and should not be able to appear. Remind them, also, no exceptions, the next category is, of course, the board itself. Uh, my feeling is, if we're gonna demand that of the applicants and the representatives. Should, and the building board membership act in the same fashion, we have seven members. Uh. Uh, if, and we have a, a, a membership that's pretty committed to attending in person. Uh. And honestly, if there's a situation where there had, where we can't have a forum, well, that's just the breaks. Uh, I just think that the applicants and the board should be here. Uh, live, now, the category, then the category becomes. The unwashed public, well, the public certainly can watch. I'm, I'm fine with that, we're online, they can watch, so the real role comes, should the members of the public be able to comment online? My personal opinion is that if, if it's of a significant concern, and I, I spend my time, and the applicant spends their time. Then that person should spend their time if it's that important to them, and get the point that, you know, it makes a hardship, but. It's no less or no more a hardship than the applicant to get here, so, I, I like the bright line, but, uh. And with the final category, the lawyer. I suppose we can.
We're always giving lawyers breaks.
Yeah.
The rest, the rest of the planning has to be here in person.
I, I honestly, I mean, I, 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 I take no view on that. That's kind of my view on the whole thing, and I think that's what we came out last time, and now we can reconsider and parse that.
That was some of the stuff that I had last time, was at least the applicant and the board.
I understand the applicant, I don't know, I don't agree with the butters, they're not the ones making the application, right, they're, it's being forced on them. So I think I would bring them more latitude.
I, I'd like to make a suggestion, just process wise here, we're, we're missing two of our members, including our chair. Um, Andy's brought up some interesting thoughts, we should chime in, I think we should kind of. Kind of think about it, and make some interesting points there, I'd like to think about them all, but I, I think we should put it on the agenda to talk about.
Okay.
Rather than.
Carry it on the next agenda.
Rather than try to do it now, because it wasn't really on the, it was, it's not really on the agenda, it's just an update.
Yeah.
I think we should add as official agenda item and give Rob and, and Patricia a chance to join in too.
Okay.
But I guess, Andrew, I, I just wanna be clear, this is our decision as to how we run our hearing, is that correct?
Correct.
The council has no say in this, so they're kind of.
Yeah, the, the only thing I recall that we've had on this was, a couple of years back, the requirement that you record meetings, uh, but that's a different thing than I think, uh, we're talking about here.
And there's no state requirements in this regard, the state grants latitude to do it.
Now, I mean, then maybe, maybe down the road, there'll be some sort of technological, sort of, you know, statutory update or something like that, but not there right now.
So do we have room on our next agenda to schedule this conversation?
We'll just add it, we'll just add it at the end, yeah.
We'll just put it on our next agenda as an official topic.
Sure.
And I didn't need to bring it up, um.
No.
Unofficially, I thought it, I thought it was dovetailing out of.
No, it's, it's good timing, actually, because we're getting to the end of the year, and it's good to know, I did actually talk about it earlier.
We can bring up everything, we can bring up everything we want, I just. We shouldn't make a decision without it, you understand?
Oh, yeah.
Um, any, anything else, any other updates from, uh, the planning director?
Um, just one thing briefly, uh, just, and again, not that there's anything specific about it in my view, uh, because I'm familiar with most of the details that I've seen thus far, but, um. The, there was a lot of talk about the global sites, or the global site on High Street, um, that matter has been for the city council, and the planning board as well, to the zoning change. Um, just as context, right now, because of the way the zoning works, and the contemplated zoning change, the city council looking at what has been contemplated here, essentially is. This E B A is the permitting authority to review the plans for that development, um, I'm reasonably comfortable with where the plans have gone thus far in the discussions, so if there's further information you're looking for in that. Um, we can circle back with you, you know, and certainly we'll have in our staff report, you know, plenty of background, um, assuming you get an application sometime next year, but. The idea there is to have essentially four residential units, there's a, a sketch plan that's in a development agreement, the city council looked at. Um, just wanted to note that for you, because there's been a lot of conversation about it, and right now, um, just to be clear, what we're expecting is the Z B A to have jurisdiction over that development, not necessarily the planning board based in the zoning work, that's right now. That's perfectly fine, in my view, I think there's plenty of latitude there for the board to review it as a discretionary special permit. And enough controls to make sure that whatever happens there is gonna come out right and well for High Street, um, but I just wanted to flag that, because one of the questions that came up during the zoning discussion was. Commercial uses, um, and just FYI, I, I wouldn't be recommending in favor of any commercial uses, that location I would recommend for residential, which is the whole basis of discussions we've had, so. Just wanted to let you know, as kind of a heads up, or even months down the road, but we think we're gonna see something. Um, will, as, as eventually allow us to have the gas station go away and have residential units, you would be able to see that, and, um, like I said, I'm not concerned with all per se of the planning that's staying that might come forward. Um, I just wanted to let you know, because it has been a discussion about it, and so if you're hearing about it, and you don't want, if you're here in the board, then we'd probably see that.
It's gonna be rezoned by multi-family.
That's the assumption right there.
So why would it have to come in front of us, why would they need a special permit for that?
Multi-family is a special permit.
It's always.
You're gonna, yeah, you're gonna, yeah, in the forty-yard district, it's not, and we are talking about making some changes elsewhere to satisfy the so-called MBTA communities guidelines, which includes Story Avenue. Uh, but before, we haven't gotten there yet, and so there's a possibility of some of those other core areas having some streamlined hazard rights, so to speak, like the forty yard, where there's design controls, but the use isn't in question. Um, multi-family, but here, uh, and these are other areas of the city that are more residential in nature, and not so much, you know, mixed-use centers, um, that is a, and is a special permit use, so, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, we're not gonna bring back Fosse Gillis's mother's house, though, right?
Yeah, I don't think you're gonna see that.
It's supposed to be a three-year, and then a carriage house, we're going, right?
Correct, correct.
There you go, that's interesting.
It sounds good, um.
It, it is, it's.
Compared to what was there.
Definitely, yeah, and I think it's, it's, you know, they have a good architecture straight now, work with them, I think it'll, it'll come out well, and, and obviously, because of the discretionary permit, I'm sure if we get something that's gonna fasten at the intersection, you just say no. Or continue the hearing, so I'm not too worried about that, um, but we've also been, by default, this is vendors asking for a D restriction to prevent commercial uses, which I'm hopeful will. Wrap itself up in a couple of weeks, um, and then we will have that also in here.
Hey, would you ever hand up there?
Um, just so that you know, do you have someone in the audience that's maybe in your hand? Um, Connie Preston, if anything, her hand.
Oh. She can hear us. Um, Connie Preston, if you're out there, uh, you could. We can unmute your mic, and you're welcome to say something.
Yes, thank you, I have been attempting to contribute for quite a while, and no one has been recognizing me. So my concern is around the conversation around the short-term rental units and how to handle, um. These applicants as they come in, I, I wanna be very clear that we should not be giving. Special recognition to people who want to, uh, have comment. Uh, and being able to do that over Zoom while requiring the applicants to be present in person, that. Absolutely makes no sense to me at all, and I wanna be very clear, you know, we've had a lot of conversation on council as we talked about. The intent of how we saw special permits for short-term rental units playing out. Um, and, and particular, you know, any, um, sort of bias that might be handled within the Z B A. Um, and anything that would be, you know, untoward against what the council had intended. For the following out of the special permits, and, you know, I'm, I'm just. I'm disheartened to hear a conversation of saying that applicants have to absolutely positively be there in person. But anybody else that wants to comment could do that over Zoom, and I just wanna really stridently, um. It show my concern.
Yeah, maybe.
Uh, and, you know, I will continue to call into these meetings, I've listened to. All of this meeting, just to participate in this particular piece, and I will continue to, uh, pay attention to these meetings, and. I just wanna make sure that you guys understand that we're here, we're listening, and we wanna make certain that, you know, the council's, um. Desire and thoughts about how this should be handled should be followed through with the Z B A, thank you.
All right, thank you very much, I just, I could just make a comment or two, the, uh, conversation we got into around, um. Whether people need to be here in person, it was really not specifically about S T R U's, it was more because. We had heard the city council was getting away from, um. Room, remote meetings, and, uh, we had some, during, during the COVID epidemic, we had meetings going well past midnight with over a hundred people, and it was very difficult. Since then, it's gotten much easier, but we're trying to figure out, where do we go, do we have? Uh, applicants, uh, here, do we have, you know, people remotely? That's really completely separate from our S T R U's, we had an S C U topic on the agenda here, because we think we're about to get many applications. And we're just a little confused, a little bit about the wording of the, um. Of the law that we have to rule on, and we're just trying to get some input from the city solicitor before we get the application, so that we are well versed. In what has been passed, and we can follow the guidelines. Um, so anyway, that, that's, two different conversations were occurring there, one on S T R U's, where we're trying to do a little homework before we get applications, and the other was, um. We're trying to figure out. You know, where we are on remote meetings, and those two kind of fit together.
I guess what she's saying, though, is the city.
I guess what she's saying, though, is the city council has some expectation that if we're gonna have to have the STRU applicant in front of us.
Yeah.
That anyone making comments are actually being in front of us as well. Sounds like the city council has that expectation. It'll be live and live.
Oh, I thought you were saying the, the, the STRU applicant could be remote.
No.
Connie, could you, I'm sorry, could you, uh?
I want to be clear, sorry, if I may, I, I want to be clear that I don't think that there, if, if commenters can be hybrid, then I think applicants can be hybrid. If commenters, or sorry, if applicants have to be there in person, then I think commenters have to be there in person as well. I just don't want to see any particular bias, one way or the other.
Does, does the ordinance speak to that?
And are you just talking about short term rentals? I think.
Yeah, well, I, I was asking a question about the, the ordinance in particular, does the ordinance speak to that? Doesn't appear to, no.
The ordinance does not, to my knowledge, the ordinance does not in particular speak to that, no.
Okay.
But, and, and, you know, I think they're just, no matter, whether this pertains to short term rental units or anything, I think that if you're requiring one side of the application to be present in person, then I think the commenters have to be present in person, or you should offer hybrid to everyone.
I, I'm curious, what do you guys do? I mean, we've gotten it secondhand, could you tell us directly? What, what does the city council do? Do you require people to be there, or do you take everybody remotely?
We take everyone remotely. We have recently been challenged with the fact that we frankly have had a lot of antisemitism Zoom bombing happening in our meetings. And so only very, very recently, the council president has unilaterally, without any discussion with the council, made the decision to not take online comment. I think there are several of us on the council that, you know, really sort of are, are concerned about that. Obviously, we don't want to give oxygen to antisemitism or racism through Zoom bombing. But we also most certainly don't want to cut off public comment. And frankly, as you mentioned, the, the pandemic has made hybrid meeting attendance sort of the more norm, and we need to find a way to get back to that. As you may be aware, our last city council meeting was last night, we did take hybrid public comment at that particular meeting. But I think as we move into our next session in our retreat, and I so apologize for my dog barking in the background, but, yeah, it, it's something that we are going to have to tackle. And we are talking about ways to register commenters, so that, but it, it's, we're very passionate about making sure that we do not lose the opportunity to have people comment and participate in meetings from a hybrid, hybrid perspective, because it really has become the norm.
That's, that's very good input, because we are, as you may have heard, we're gonna be taking this up when our chair is back, and, and, you know, in January, and figure out where we go from here. To date, we've done everything totally hybrid, and people can be in any place. But we haven't moved up of that this time, so we're, we'll be revisiting this in January, I think your, your comments are very helpful.
Yeah, again, my, my focus here is just making sure that we're not showing bias to one side of this versus the other. And my preference personally would always be to, to allow for hybrid for everybody, because it really does encourage public comment and engagement as a whole. Again, we've, you know, sort of had this problem with Zoom bombing, and we, we do need to find, figure out a solution for this. But, you know, I will always advocate for the public engagement as a whole. So, you know, finding a way, if you guys are not having this complication of, you know, sort of this perturbance of Zoom bombing, I, I would argue that maximizing public engagement is really the best thing that we can do. Because that is best for democracy.
Well, that's very good input. Does anybody else have anything? We're kind of just in general update period. Alright, so I guess we'll take up both this topic and the STR input, STRU input from our attorneys in January.
Thank you, Council Preston, we'll, we'll see you at the next meeting with that discussion.
Thank you, I appreciate you taking my comment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very helpful, thank you for hanging in there. Alright, I guess we're down, like, we're looking for a motion to adjourn.
So?
So, Paul and Jacob. Have a nice holiday.
Yeah.